By fifteen, time to call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Tony Corby?
Here.
Bruce Rabwine? Roxanne Spokestead Beach, here. Jennifer Windows?
Here.
Emily McGonigal? Ted Saxton?
Here.
Joanne Smith?
Here.
Okay, and we all will stand for the pledge.
And, just to note, not voting, myself and Mitch are both here.
Oh, Kevin?
No.
All right.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice.
Okay. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Okay, all those in favor?
Hang on, just one second. The only correction that I have is back on number five. Paul Faring hit, he resigned last month. Something didn't work out, obviously was short. So, he actually stayed on. He rescinded, and we're fine to keep him. Since this went out, got another that they will be done leaving the state as of Friday. So, what I would like to do on number five is approve the rehire of Paul Faring, bus driver, effective January 25th through February 25th. So that we don't have to come back and accept a resignation next month. Other than that, it is as printed.
Okay, all those in favor with the modification of number five? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And now, we will go to the action items.
No, no, hang on. Can I, if I want to do the board presentation, if I can? Can I do that before we hit open forum?
Oh, okay.
As typical, and it is my honor, first of all, on behalf of the students, as well as the parents of the community and school district, to thank the board members for their joyous service, or, I don't know how to say it. Yeah, you know, it's a thankless job. Public service, obviously, it's very important, and we appreciate what you do. Each month, each year in February, the School Board Association recognizes the school board and thanks them. And so, from myself, as well as, like I say, the students and families, I thank each and every one of you for another rough year, if that's the way to say it. But, we do appreciate it very much. So, as typical, and I can't do things, I'm just going to show one, and I will come around, print it off the certificates from the Minnesota School Board Association Recognition Week, February 21st to the 25th. Certificate of Appreciation, the Minnesota School Board Association honors the board member for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the students of their community. So, thank you, and we appreciate all of you.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. And now, we have action items. Number one, resolution-
Rob, I think you're getting cut of yourself there.
Open forum, so on.
Well, where's my-
Did you skip from-
When we approved the agenda, we didn't approve the consent agenda.
And down here, we have open-
Oh, okay.
Here, thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you. Okay. So now, we have the Elks Student of the Month.
Oh, no, that's not a real name.
Is it? Okay. I apologize. I always, just give me one second.
I'll eventually get this right.
It'll be your last day.
Yeah.
You'll finally get comfortable.
Is that when you did?
Yeah, about a year into it. Actually, it was many months where I felt, where I didn't, like, over-prepare for it.
Really?
Okay, thank you.
Ready for me on? Yep, the Elks Student of the Month.
Ryan, if you'd like to come up. I'm going to give you, and I think we'll kind of face it. It seems weird putting our backs, but at least that way, I'm going to give you the option. Ryan Hedlund is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for February. Ryan is the son of Michelle and Perrin Hedlund. While at Falls High School, Ryan participated in football for grades nine through 12, and golf for grades seven through 12. Ryan has optimized his time at FHS by participating in the vast majority of college and the school classes by taking CIS math, history, English as junior and senior, that was all of those, along with chemistry and physics that are no slouches either. Mrs. Manasseh said Ryan is a great student who balances his academics with his extracurricular activities. He is naturally intelligent and has a great math intuition. He has a bright future. Ms. Hammer said Ryan is a student that shows responsibility, has a respectful attitude, and makes the right life choices daily. He is reliable, cares about having success academically, and takes all the steps necessary to ensure that he has a very bright future. When not in school, Ryan enjoys hunting in the fall with his grandpa, uncle, and cousins, along with fishing with his grandma. He also likes to play golf with family and friends. Ryan plans to attend Vemidji State University in the fall, where he plans to major in biology and sports management and communication. Ryan Hedlund, Elks February Student of the Month. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, congratulations.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks. Now, do you not need pause for picture now?
No, we, we, sorry. We went down and took the picture. Just so everyone's aware, our other Student of the Month, which we'll do next month, she had a commitment right now, was Ryan Ford. So, we'll come back and get that. And we actually have one more yet to possibly do, so. Perfect.
Okay. All right. Now, it's time for public open forum. We will ask who-
Julius Masech has one person signed up, and through this, I'm going to be honest, is a student, and would like to address the board. Come on up. He asked Mr. Iverson if he could address the board with respect to prom. And I'm not going to steal all the thunder, but is interested, I think, in having sophomores possibly join.
Yep.
So, I'm going to let him speak, and then I'll give you a couple words or-
Do any face certain area?
Well, if you, and again, don't feel bad about having your back. The camera gets it for the recording.
Yeah.
So, if you can kind of maybe face that way, and just like I say, it feels weird putting your back to us, but-
Go right ahead.
Yeah.
I am Julius Masech, and I'm a junior here at FHS. I came here today to ask for your consideration on allowing sophomores to attend prom if asked by a senior or a junior. I spoke with Mr. Iverson, and he told me that he would support this decision. I feel like our school numbers are small enough to accommodate a few people who would be added to prom. This would be invite-only, not every sophomore would be attending. Dances are more fun if we can go with people we want to, and if there are more there. This is a huge event in our high school years. Prom is a night to honor being a teenager, so I ask for board permission for us to spend it with friends and make memories that will last forever. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Does anyone, and typically, we, and I explained to Julius, we typically don't get into a question-and-answer type deal, but I guess I'm going to ask, does anyone, before I give you a few pieces of information, I told them we probably won't make a decision tonight, but we will be in touch. Does anyone have a question, or anything you'd like to say?
I would maybe have a question of you.
Okay, yeah, we'll get into it. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Myself or Mr. Iverson. And again, if you want to sit and listen for a little bit, you can, but we will be in touch.
Thank you.
Just to give the board a little bit of insight, he did come through, I'm going to say, the right channels. The reason I wanted to just at least have a little conversation is, prom is not very far off here. You know, if there is going to be a change, and I say if, you know, we do have to move fairly quickly. Prom is being planned, obviously, you know, I'm just saying, moving forward. Mr. Iverson and I, to be honest, both do support allowing sophomores. Our feeling of why it was juniors and seniors for many years was a nature of size, okay? As schools get smaller, there are quite a few, and I'm, again, not going to say all, because I, you know, have opened it up and do allow other sophomores, freshmen and sophomore. Not going to say we found any underfreshmen for prom. We, I guess, don't have a reason not to support, okay? Unless it's just, we want to keep it to a junior and senior thing. You know, that's the tradition, it's always been. Keep in mind, if you, I don't know, it's been half a dozen years ago, we opened it up to students from outside. You know, again, they had to be juniors or seniors. I think we actually went up to maybe nineteen, if I recall, you know, allowing a little bit older, I think.
I think that was turned out.
Wasn't turned out. I don't remember. Like I say, I know it came to board, but we have modified.
No, you know what happened? I think the nineteen-year-old, the person, we didn't end up voting on it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I think the person ended up finding somebody at the school to go with instead.
Point is, we have made some, you know, switches. You have districts around us that do, not saying all. We didn't check with, you know, every school. So, I guess I'm open to hearing if the board is open to considering it, if there's something you want from Mr. Iverson or myself, so that we can somewhat move it, you know, either no, we're not going to, you know, consider it now, but we're not going to change it, or we'd be willing to look at it if you could get me X, Y, and Z, or whatever it may be.
Personally, I guess, unless somebody had an argument against it, I'd be open to hearing that, too. I can't pick a one. So, to me, I just think whatever you guys would think would be best. Where am I?
Again, we're not opening up to where sophomores can, you know-
I like keeping it that way, so you have the eleven and twelve graders that are choosing their dates.
Yeah.
And I just was wondering if it would cause less people to be able to attend out of the juniors and seniors, or any, would that affect any attendance on?
I guess I can't answer that. The only thing, I had a couple people kind of, when I had mentioned it, you know, trying to, you know, inquire on, and a few people went, well, that's not fair. We didn't, you know, that argument of, it wasn't that way when I came through. The other thing that might have been a piece, a junior made a comment, you know, that's not fair, and I'm just going to say it, is a lot of them have already passed their dates, you know, type deal, and just say they were truly dating a sophomore. You know, yeah, it would have been nice to know six months ago if we were going to change it, but Mr. Masech or no one else brought it to us, you know, to change. So, I guess, Mr. Iverson and I said, if we were going to change it, say, three months from now, why wouldn't you do it now? You know, type deal.
So, if next year, then we have it, and then that would open it up to anybody that's asked by a junior or senior, and then-
Only sophomores.
Yeah. Only sophomores, then it just, I just want to make sure that it won't affect any-
Well, I can't guarantee, Rox, you know, just say some junior-
Wouldn't it be a seniarity of where a junior or a senior might not be able to go?
Just say I was a, say I was a senior, and I asked a junior, okay? If all of a sudden you open it up to allowing sophomores, and I asked a sophomore and didn't ask the junior, and that junior, you know, you see what I'm saying? I can't guarantee if some kid doesn't get chosen, you know?
But I also feel that there's so many of them that go as a single group anyways, so it's not like worth putting anybody else that they can't go.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So, I guess what we need is, and again, it's not technically a policy. It's in rule. It's a, you know, what we follow, the rules for prom. So, and we need at least, is there anyone totally against this, or would like more information? We need, again, next Monday, in a boardwork session for budget. I mean, if you wanted this brought back, we could bring it next Monday. You know, if there's something, someone really wanted to see, if everyone, I'm going to use Ted's word, can't think of a reason why we shouldn't. And again, nothing says don't. You know, you could try this, and if it doesn't go well this year for some reason, you always have a right to change it, but typically, we probably don't.
I don't have anything. I defer to you guys about this, what you think is best for the student body.
Me, too.
That is all we need at this point, and I, like I said, Tim and I, at this point, are both on board. So, we will move forward this year, allowing, again, juniors or seniors to ask a sophomore if so desired. Again, they have to follow the same criteria, but they can start applying, so. Nice job, Mr. Masech.
Thank you. When is prom?
Prom was set, I think it's April 9th, am I, do you remember? I'm sure it's April 9th. Yeah. Perfect.
All righty. Are we ready to move on?
Unless there's anyone else for open forum.
Okay. Now, I would, now, now I do, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda as it is presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, discussion, Kevin?
I don't think, the only note I made was that through February 25th on number five. Otherwise, I think we're good.
Okay. So, the first time I remember to ask for this, there is number five. Okay. Now, I'll go through, this is through nineteen. Now, the resolution-
Oh, hang on. You need to ask for the-
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. All righty. Now, I'll move on to the action item. Okay. Resolution for the acceptance of gifts, which is, whereas the School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, we resolve the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations or grants received by the school district. Now, I do the motion first.
No, no, just go ahead.
Okay. PCA Mill of I Falls, two pallets of copy paper and vending machine books at $4,000. Falls Education Foundation for, or Falls Elementary, Falls High School, Bronco Athletics, oh, whoops, I'm sorry. Falls Elementary, $3,501.55. Falls High School, $4,190.80. And Bronco Athletics, $6,988.65. Girls Hockey Booster Charter Bus Assistant, $984.62. Now, could I have a motion? So. Second. Twelve seconds. Tony? All those, oh, wait. Any discussion?
The only comment I would make, obviously, thank you to all of our people that donate, but just so the boards are aware, Falls Ed Foundation, this is a second round for this year. They kind of do, they're trying to do one in the fall, and then if people, and I'm going to say, people, if teachers hadn't requested, they could, you know, do it later in the year. The same with the fall and winter, coaches are kind of a fall app for the most part, and then spring coaches, it's meant to be, you know, this round. It's totaled in just about 30,000. So, again, thank you. Obviously, PCA, ongoing, they give and give, too. Thank you very much. And then, I'm not sure who donated for the, if it was just boosters for the bus or whatever, they wanted to go, they're going on a farther trip, but thank you, so.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Item number two. Approve an unpaid three-year extended leave of absence request from Jill Catron, elementary teacher, effective school year 2022 through 2023 through, and 2024 through 2025. Motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Twelve seconds. Any discussion?
Just so the boards are aware, Jill came and chatted with me, I'm guessing it's probably been a couple weeks ago. She started her career, just going to say, a little later in life, and is getting to a point of, I guess, being ready to retire. But the family, her and her husband, would like to take, be given a leave so that they could do something that's better for them financially. In other words, can invest a little more before she truly retires. Again, it doesn't toss the district anything. We, you know, normally, if we pay into TERA as well as the employee, they're going to take care and do whatever they want, just like any other one, any other person not leave if you want to pay. But that's, she has no intention of coming back. Obviously, legally, she could, but she's just asking, she's done, and would ask for a leave for a few years before she formally retires. And so, I hundred percent recommend it and trust completely. Similar, I'm just going to be honest, you know, not exactly the same, but this COVID, you know, a year ago took a leave, you know, a shorter amount of time, but to get her to a certain point, and it's worked out well. So, it's different than, I'm going to say, someone forty years old taking a leave, you know, or thirty, or something like that. So, hundred percent support it and wish Ms. Catron the best.
And Jill has been a dedicated teacher. I've known her for a long time, and I admire her work as a teacher, so she'll be sadly missed.
I have a question about this in general. Will this help us when we have to do the budget? Like, if we're having to lay off teachers, or?
Well, what's going to come, in fact, hopefully by the 28th, is you're going to get staff in from us. That's my hope. We have two people now, if we recall, someone else took a leave, and this one. Between those two, I think it's going to, and again, without going too far out on a limb, it's going to possibly save us from making any reductions. Now, that said, I can't say every, you know, nothing's in stone yet. So, but it's, I don't foresee personally having to replace both of them, let's put it that way. So, I think we're all together. But again, that's yet to be seen.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three. Approve the superintendent contract with Kevin Grover for July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion.
I guess I would lay it over either Jen kind of spearheaded, or Ted, or Tony, or on the committee. I mean, I can talk to it, but it-
I don't want to talk to it, but I do want to just thank Jen. She definitely carried the lion's share of the word for us with Kevin prodding us. I'm going to say it sometimes. But, so, I just want to especially thank Jen for the work on it.
I think I can speak that we did the same percentage increase for the first and second year, which was two and one for, no, sorry.
There was a, I'm going to call it a minor adjustment to year one, and then followed with the same compensation, because that throws off the first year, so to speak.
Yes, yes.
There was a little, there was an amount added, in essence, along with the percentage, then the same in the second year, and stipend was the same.
Great. Just, did I have the percentages right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah. So, you're right. We did a comparison on other superintendent salaries and made a minor adjustment, and then from there, did the same percentages as the other contracts of two and one, or the other admin contract and the teacher contract. And then the same super, excuse me, the same stipend as the teachers and the admin. And then, I made an adjustment on an opportunity to sell back some of, a few vacation days per year that I'll take. Those are the adjustments.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much, Kevin. It's been a really nice experience to work with you.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone.
Item number four. Approve two $500 recruitment retention stipends for L4798 pair of professionals. The first $500 stipend is to be paid to pair of professionals employed by the district and actively working the majority of time from August 31st, 2021, to December 31st, 2021. First payment will be made no later than March 11, 2022. A second $500 stipend to be paid to pair of professionals employed by the district and actively working the majority of the time, January 1, 2022, through June 2, 2022. Second payment will be made on the last payroll in June 2022. Motion? I'll make that motion. Second. Second. Oh. Emily? Okay. And is there any discussion?
Just so the boards are aware, the pairs, vocal 4798, was our first group to settle. And we settled, it had the stipend in for $1,000 for the first year and $1,000 for the second. As we went along, we settled with all the other groups at $2,000 for the first year, $1,000 for the second year. So, there's been conversation about, I'm going to say, making it right with that group. So, again, we're not opening up the contract. We're just making it right of giving them-
Equal.
Equal. Because otherwise, you know, you're going to run into, I'm just going to be honest, not that everything's equal, but, you know, was our intention to hold, but we didn't hold. And so, again, I recommend it'll catch them up on their first payment and do the second payment, then year two is the same as everyone else. So, I just think it's the right thing to do, as well as a few of the board members that were, you know, part of the, yeah, we need to do this.
Pairs are right in the trenches all the time. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Committee and admin reports. Mitch Erickson, would you like to speak?
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me today. All right. So, Winter Sports Week, we had that in January, and it went pretty well. Got more kids involved, and we were able to boost a little of the school spirit for about a week there. And, I don't know, I think the Pet Fest really helped, especially in a COVID year like this year. Rose sale, we had a Valentine's rose sale. That went pretty well. I believe we sold like 150 roses, so it was pretty good. Made some good profits of that. And thank you to everyone who bought a rose and supported student council. Blood Drive, that is happening March 9th, from 8:00 AM to 2:30 in this student parking lot. We're still looking for people to sign up. We're actually calling right now until 7:00 PM. Except we get a phone call, I'm sorry. So, we're going to, we're calling people tonight, and if you're wanting, if you're interested, you can email Mr. Wang and sign up. Student Council, so right now, we have our meetings about every Thursday, and from 7:30 to 8:15, 8:10-ish. We're trying to open, have an open forum for any students to come in from 7:30 to 7:40, and if they have any problems, or they want us to do something. So, we're probably going to open that up soon here, probably next week or the week after. We are doing a radio interview with Mr. Ringhauffer at the radio station coming up this Thursday at 8:30, if you want to listen, 8:30. We're going to talk about the Blood Drive and upcoming student council events, so. And elections, we had, currently had some new board members come on. We're also looking for our new members to join student council as well. Our meetings are every Thursday from 7:30 to 8:10, and I already said that. If you want to show up, you can. And, yeah. That's all I got. Any questions? Perfect.
Thank you, Mitch.
You're welcome.
And Missy?
Our current member that calls L are 441, which is town two from last month. Our current member that calls L are four forty one, which is town two from last month. Those students moved out of town. We have parent teacher conferences scheduled for this Thursday from four to eight. And then we have our book fair coming up on Wednesday, March twenty third. Our students in grades three through five will be going to the Rife Center in Grand Rapids for Fairy Tales on Ice at the end of March. We're starting to plan our Starbase trip, so that's up and running. And then we are working on surveying families to continue to compile summer school data. And then preschool registration has opened. And our Monday through Friday classes are already full with a waitlist of seven. Our Tuesday, Thursday classes are full with a waitlist, and we saw several openings in half day, so many people are still registering. And then we have twenty four pending our nurse register report so far, because I also opened on the seventeenth. Any questions for me?
Are we doing COVID updates from these one of them?
Well-
Okay. Thanks, Missy. And Tim, do you have his report?
I don't. I can give you just a couple of things. Tim is out for a few weeks at least, so we are running short. We did have, and I'll talk a little bit about, we did student, I shouldn't say we, teamwork's met with sixth or eighth graders and a group of nine through twelve last week. I don't have data, but the kids were with them. The sixth or eighth were with about an hour, and then the nine through twelve, it was probably close to an hour and a half. A little more talkative, you know, and that type of thing, in a little bit bigger group. But he collected a pile of information, was very happy with, you know, the interaction with the kids, so that was very pleased, or he was pleased with it. And so that was good. They have after-school tutoring, I think you talked about this last, last month start, it started up and it's going, I wanna say probably three weeks now, maybe it's been a month. And there's three staff, I think, three or four, I forget. And then we also transport up to about a half a dozen kids that need ride, a ride home. So it seems to be going well. Some of it is academic, meaning they're in classrooms, working on homework. Kids that are, be done with homework or, you know, get X amount done. There's another room where they have some games going on, and I forget what the third room is. But it's, it seems to be going good, employing kids, and hopefully it'll keep doing that. So I think that's, oh, conferences on March first, it's the last round of conferences. Other than that, that's about all I have from the high school.
Okay, thank you. And Kevin, now your report?
Okay, and I just threw things in no specific order here, but a few things that have come up that I need some guidance or at least some direction, or tell me just to do whatever you think and we'll, we'll do that, so to speak. But Sage was here, I wanna say, two months ago, and, you know, brought up the school pictures. It is to that time, if it is something we want to consider opening back up, now would be the time to do that. Just so the, the board is on, or in the loop. I believe it was nineteen twenty, we did a RFP, request for proposal, for a school photographer. It's a one-year contract with the ability to extend up to four years. Certain things we laid out, we wanted, and then groups put in, I'm gonna call it a bid. And so at that point, a different photographer was chosen, okay? I will be honest, the first year did not go real well, if you recall. It was, the company was going through a transition and merging with Shudderfly, to be honest, and they just had a pile of mix-ups. Now, that being said, they, in my mind, made it right. I think all the elementary got their pictures free plus, some, some people got multiple, and, and a coupon, if you will. Year two, if that's the way to say it, went better. I'm not gonna say there weren't, you know, it was nothing near that first year. Were there some pictures that I would agree were not perfect and had to be retaken? Yeah. There's definitely some people that are not fans. School pictures, we got what we needed from a school standpoint, that we always have. Long story short, is we're not to the end of where we quote unquote "have to go out." And so I need, from a board and a community perspective, do you want us to open it up and go through that process?
So to clarify, we have, we can have one more year?
I think we can actually have two, but for sure one more unless I wrote it out.
I think it's just one.
Well, it was up to five years for some-
Really? I thought it was four.
And- It was four additional, is the way, unless I misread it, but.
So we could either leave it as is, or we can open it up to-
Can we open up as another RFP then?
Then that's what we would do, and for instance, and again, if anyone can, you know, bid, and we have to come down with our criteria then, because there are, there are other people interested. And again, I'm not gonna throw names, another company, you know, there's companies reaching out every year, you know, looking to expand their reach. And so like this-
And we could end up with going with any company, if we opened it up, we could go with this company?
Yeah, make sure you're into the mic.
I'm sorry, if we opened it up, we could go with either this company or any others that the RFP, we are for.
And it's what we want, and there's some places that do everything, from athletics all the way through, you know, any picture. We just did the school pictures and let, I mean, say, coaches and advisors go whichever direction they wanted. Obviously, some of the companies would like everything, you know, more business, but we just didn't go that route. We've never, personally, never gotten into that business of making that choice. We've let the coaches and advisors do that, and they, some do different things, let's just put it that way.
And you have your request for the number of pictures you need for our school district. So that would always be part of what the RFP would have to include, so.
It would be to take a picture for every student. We, we don't have to, you know, we give them a rough population, if you will. But I mean, if we go up twenty students or down twenty, they don't, you know, they bid roughly on the size. And typically, I'll just be honest, work-wise, we usually don't wanna do this every year, and that's why you try doing a multiple, you know, year deal. Will we ever please a hundred percent? Probably not, you know? And again, I don't wanna get into that debate of-
Yeah, so as far as the discussion goes, I do think that what you said about them making it right the first year after the big screw-up. I mean, many people ended up with a lot of extra pictures. The second year was kind of more normal. And then this last year, I have more of a question. I didn't hear a lot of negative from a lot of people, enough to where it's not just anecdotal, it seems like it was pretty legitimate. But did they also reduce the amount of pictures or increase the cost? I, I don't recall right now, but I vaguely remember looking at it with my wife and thinking, there's less pictures on here, or something like that.
No, the picture packages and actually the prices are bid out for the whole thing.
So it didn't change?
I'd have to go back, either they put in an increase, you know, for each year, or I wanna say, don't, I shouldn't even say. I don't think there's had any price change, but I could be wrong, but that's an option, you know, every-
But we knew what the price-
Yeah, correct. There's no reneging.
I guess I, maybe I could have been wrong on how I was recalling it, but I just remember looking at it and thinking, thinking like you got less pictures or something this year.
No, I can, in fact, I had, and I, you think I would remember from two, three weeks ago, I looked at the original, all the originals again, you know. And I wanna say theirs was the same for all five years, but I could be wrong, because there were actually, I think, four companies, four or five companies that put in, one came in late, and I actually have the buy years still down in my office and everything else. But like you say, if you want it redone, we put it out. If you wanna go another year, I mean, it's-
So the only thing I would say is we, it was definitely, I was the board chair at the time, right? Yeah, I think so. But it was a bit of a fiasco, where a lot of the public had strong feelings about it, and gratefully so. And that, if we're putting out an RFP for it, that we should also make sure the people that are bidding follow the rules of public bidding process, and, and so maybe have that. If we do end up deciding to go with an RFP, say, these are the things that you have to follow. Like I know one is solicitation of employees and different things like that, that are, are-
Uncomfortable.
Well, not uncomfortable, they're against, they're against the state guidelines. So if we provided that as well.
We can, is just keep in mind, it's gonna be tough when, and I'm just gonna say, there's multiple local people if they all bid. You know, and yeah, there's a way, you're not supposed to put pressure on, but it's tough when, you know, and I'm just gonna, there's legal things and I know where you're going. There's other things that, I'm just gonna say, if I'm a Ted supporter and Ted's bidding it, you know.
Yeah, but that's different than solicitation. We got an email from a staff member, and, and it was very nice and everything like that. And it didn't come off as solicitation, you know. So anyways, that's, going, going around and asking at, at school functions is different than, you know, I think this person does a good job. People should support who they wanna support.
I think there's more discussion over there? You know, I, I'm just, I was actually going back to, you know, if you look at this moment. But is this kind of one of those examples that, that teamwork gentleman was talking about? Is this one where, you know, what would we recommend to us, and is this a governance versus a?
Typically, I would say, yes, the, the problems, and I'm just gonna say problem has been, this has always been, in eye falls at least, a public thing. You know, typically, yeah, we would do the process, bring to the board, because the board's the only one that can enter contracts technically. You would approve the contract and we would go on, you know, type deal, and we would, we would do an RFP process. But like you say, it's just a nature of the beast, if you will, and not saying that in a bad way, that this has always been-
I'm okay with going a bad way too.
Is public, you know, as public as can be, because, and again, it's just been, everyone that's sat on the board, it's between this and insurance. It's been two, you know, nightmares for the most part, over and over, you know, because again, we do a ton of work. And picking a photographer, again, it's important, we all have beautiful pictures on our walls and, you know. I'm not downplaying any of that, but it's just turned into, you know, more, I guess, more than I think it should, because it's just like, I'm gonna say this and I'll probably come back to bite me, it's like buying a vehicle, you know, that's how we're gonna look at it. We're gonna look at, does it have everything we need, you know, can they provide it, you know, and I'm looking at this as pictures, you know. Most of the time, all the picture people can provide the picture, it's of adequate quality, you know, and they give a price, and they can do it in a timeframe, for the most part. If they can meet those, they're qualified, and so then we start looking at price.
I would say, if, if, we use a analogy, though, sometimes you do buy a lemon, and it seems like in the last year, that it seemed more like it was a lemon than it was-
It could be, but the flip side is also, you know, are we at a point where you would say this company can't bid? I mean, they're, I can't say they're the biggest picture company in the US, but they're in the top two or three, you know, that I'm aware of at least, and so I mean, again-
So I don't know the, I don't know the exact law on that, but if they were to come in as the similar price as someone else, or a very close price anyways, then we have, we have, we have a obligation to take the lowest bidder unless there's a reason not to.
But I guess that's what I'm asking, and again, I'm gonna use my own self as an example. I got a picture on the wall that is just fine, you know, and doesn't matter if I had a retake or not.
And I have two that are really good.
You know, and, and again, the other people that will bid, they're all gonna do an excellent job, you know, now.
So I, I guess what I'm saying is I don't see any reason why you would ban a company from bidding. And I also don't even know that you legally-
Well, if you have a bad experience and things go south, and for instance, we said, I'm just gonna say after year two, this isn't working out, and we're going in a different direction, they can bid, but even if they're the cheapest, you can, with rights, go a different direction. You know, and that would be our right, that we've just had, I'm gonna say, two bad years, you know, and are moving on. And if that was the case, they wouldn't bid, you know, they're, they're a company that they would see the writing on the wall, but.
Tony, do you have something to say? Did you have any discussion on it?
No, I'm, I'm open to opening up the RFP again, and I like Ted's side, I do wanna make sure everybody that is involved in this does understand that it is a request for bid, and we have to look at it as that.
Yeah, I'm also, oh, sorry, I was just gonna reiterate, I didn't just figure it then, sorry, that most okay if as a board, we want to say, bring us the recommendation to.
I have no problem bringing, you know, because like I say, I don't disagree that for the most part, it's a, it's a bid process. We're gonna go through, it's kind of like almost hiring someone, we're gonna go through and do the work. And it's gonna come to you for approval, you know, and it'll have supporting documents, and you can see, you know, the stuff behind it, but it's-
Jen, Joanne, did you guys have anything?
Joanne, you?
I agree with Tony.
I have a question. Because of this, we don't, we're not purchasing something, does it need to be an RFP? Because this is, families purchase something, correct?
Correct, but that's the process for us, you can call it, it's not a, well, in essence, it's a sealed bid, because that's the way we collect, so that I'm not showing Ted, you know, and I can't get, and it's a fair process. Other than that, that's what we have to do, a fair process to select, I mean-
They're providing us the service.
Yeah, they're providing the service. Okay, you know, you're right, we're not spending our own money technically, there are things that we need, you know. You know, school picture, you know, different things for our student management system. And, you know, there's things people agree with and disagree with, and I, I mentioned this, I forget who I was talking with. You know, every student gets a picture, not everyone agrees with that, a class picture, you know. That started, not this company, but before, with one of the companies. And from an outsider looking in, it was one of the, I think, coolest things I've ever seen, because that way, every student, elementary through high school technically gets packaged. And so when I walk out, no one knows if I got packaged A, B, C, or all I got was a school picture. Especially at the elementary, they put them in the backpacks, the kids don't get them out for the most part. Everyone leaves with the same thing. To me, I think that's great. Now, there's other people that disagree, they're giving, we're all paying for that one-way, shape or form, you know, those people that are buying pictures. But it's one of those kind of equity pieces that I guess I feel good about.
Would that be a part of the requirement?
That, we made it a part of the requirement after, I don't remember even which company brought it to us years ago and went, yeah, we agree with that. Now, if someone wants to change my mind the other way, we can, but I would personally, I think, as administration, we would keep that as a part of it. Again, everyone realizing we're all paying for it, you know, anyone buying pictures is somehow paying for that. But it's just, it's kind of like every kid coming to school with a backpack on the first day, you know. It feels good if we as a community can make that happen, yet all that, and again, I'm not saying every kid does, but there's a lot of programs that try, you know, to make everyone come with feeling like they have everything they need.
Do you think we should just go with what you're talking about, Emily, and just ask Kevin to bring back the recommendation?
I guess, you know, I think that, if that's the way we're moving in general, you know, in terms of wanting to kind of establish some pieces, I think as long as the, you know, the rubric around the RFP is, makes sense, and that, you know, just for my two cents, but again, this would be ultimately your decision as a management decision, it wouldn't be the cheapest, you wouldn't hire the cheapest teacher, you wouldn't hire the, or buy the cheapest thing, you know, necessarily, I'm guessing there's a lot of other factors that would come into play. But I certainly would say, if that's the way we're wanting to move as general, as a strategic plan, I would be open to the recommendation. That's just my thoughts.
Will you?
I have, I didn't get to-
Yeah, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I remember this process from before I was even on the board, and I, one thing I thought of when it was, you know, one option we had when we said we can go four extra years is, does it commit to five years? So if service is going down, we can reevaluate, which is what you're bringing up. I agree with our teamwork's experience that likely this makes sense to be a management assist process. And I support that if that's how the board wants to go with it. Because you brought it to us because it has become such a, a public, the public does come to us about this, as board members, and so I understand why you wanted that, that input. And I don't have enough experience to say that Life Touch did not do what we have asked, but I do feel I heard enough that says that picture quality, not, not the majority of the picture quality. I said there was, I'll tell you what I heard the first year, there were some Pi members that were asked to be volunteers- first year, there were some Pi members that were asked to be volunteers to help kind of field kids and they told me the experience was really great that first year, that's in terms of children sitting down, getting their picture taken and taking some time in that. Um, I don't know if that happened this year, if there were any volunteers that helped in that sense, um, and I've heard some negative things that, that wasn't, that extra time was not taken and that has turned into some pictures not being very good. But how that Jamie or administrator or someone is getting treated by the company when these things do come up matters, so again, that I feel like is administration's job to collect that information and recognize, okay, we've heard from this many families or this many thing and we're weighing that against the RFP information that you guys get, cause we haven't, we put a lot of thought into that last conversation and we did it, we didn't take it lightly, I think, I also reiterate what Ted's saying that we expect professionalism from anybody who's, you know, bringing up their, uh, asking us to give them their business and following the rules really doesn't matter, it's more fair and so, so I both agree that we can make this a management thing and I also see some points in bringing up the RFP again because of some changes perhaps, I wanna just guarantee that they get two more years and it can continue to slide, you know, without them showing up in the ways that they didn't show up at times.
Um, I'd also like to uh, be back on what you said Emily in terms of the discussion before, or yeah, but there, the last time, uh, did have to do with the fact that our school district has a lot of uh, families that are on low income and so the price did make a big difference too, we chose the cheapest price to, anyway.
And again, we, I got, I got what I need, we will, we will put an RFP together again, for the most part, and we will bring a recommendation to the board and again, it's gonna be just like we're buying a product, we will weigh, and I'm talking Tim Missy and I, um, you know, all the pieces we should look at at least, um, and we'll bring you what we got. Now, it'll take a little bit of time because we'll have to get it put together and out, but we will move, so we need to do that so that we can get it in place, so that we can set dates for next year, so, that's what I need there. Um, the other piece that someone had asked me and I'll be honest, I, it's been a couple of years, um, I think two years, we had not looked at, and I call it class rings now, but there's a company that, that gives us what I call grad services from caps, gowns and as parents can buy, you know, some other memorabilia, yet that's also who your class ring gets ordered through. Um, we did a comparison, I wanna say, you remember Stace, was it two years ago, three years ago, um, and um, two companies put in, the one that we use, sorry, I got something in my eye, um, and Justin's is the other big competitor, it's, a lot of people think it is Justin's, Justin's does our yearbook, they don't do our class rings, okay? Long story short, and this was, I'm guessing 40 years ago, Justin's used to do it all, okay? Um, one of their reps left Justin's and went out on their own and started what I'm gonna call as this grad services, it was a different name, um, and somehow he got the school to go with him, again, it's the same ring, it's a longstanding tradition, um, and he sells the rings and there was actually even some coordination and this is moving very fast, even locally, Mr. Trumpeter was involved for many years in sizing the rings, I'm gonna say giving some, I assume some cut, you know, out of that, that piece of it and helping many families, I'm sure thousands upon thousands with the class ring. He no longer is part of it, but that same company is a long since a different person, rep, okay, the same person doesn't still own the company that did it when this happened, that was probably 40 years ago. As far as I'm aware, we've never went back to Justin's for the ring part, like I said, a year, two years ago or whatever, we did look at not the ring piece, but the cap gown and other services that they have and for the most part, they were very equivalent and so at that point, we stayed with this grad services that we've worked with for quite a few years. Again, I heard a couple people question on the ring quality and that's all I got to go on is.
I got a question, if, if you changed companies, does the ring design change?
No, no, the ring design, again, that is not, that's something that is ours, it's not, and even a lot of people, that's trademarked, no, it's, Justin's I believe made it originally, but it's ours and so we could take it to anyone so to speak, or some other school could technically start using it if they wanted, it's not, you know, it's kinda like.
I'm not sure we're gonna use that.
No, no, so I guess the problem I have, like I say, is I don't have much to go on, I mean, we can, we can put an RFP out if, if the group, I'm asking for input, if you think we're having enough, you know.
So I've, I've never heard a complaint, um, once, but you have.
I've not heard.
So, um, but I would defer to the conversation, the discussion that we just had too, you know, so if, uh, if, um, we're gonna go down that road and be.
It would just be an RFP and.
Recommendation from you.
I mean, I, I guess I'm more asking if there's enough, cause like I said, other than the, the couple conversations that I was brought aware of, I've heard very little issues over time in one of them, one of them this year is being dealt with, I don't know, I spoke to the person, if it isn't handled appropriate, let me know, I wanna know.
It's kinda interesting to stay with the same company for four years.
Well, I'm just, I don't, it might have been, I have no idea, it's a long time, it's, I mean, it's before my time in the district, like I say, and it was originally, Justin's would love to have us back, they would take any opportunity to bid, it may be someone else as well, you know, there's other ring companies, so when we open that up, um, it could be, you know, like I say.
I think it would be nice to hear from the families that have recently purchased them because there was a lot of families that, and a few, and that have reached out to me and said there was either spelling issues or just some different, it looked different than before, um, so it'd be nice to hear, I mean, it's a lot of money for them to be spending on it.
I agree.
It'd be nice to just hear from them to see what these issues are and then kind of be able to go from there, I think.
I guess my thought then is I will work with Mr. Everson, you know, again, there is a time to, you know, that we're with this company, they're gonna do grad this year, we're looking forward to a year from now, I'll have him talk with, and he has a junior class meeting and, you know, and again, I'm not saying there aren't, just like buying anything, there can be some issues, it's to me, how it's dealt with, you know, is, I'm just gonna throw it out there, is Ted's ring, the same quality as a ring nowadays? Like, you know, I don't know that, you know, things change over time and gold should be gold, but let's be honest, our cars are not made exactly the same as they were 30 years ago either, um, so, I will just take it and have Tim do a little, um, little conversation there and see where we get to. Um, the third thing on my list, and again, um, it's, it's having a conversation, everyone, I shouldn't say, well, some people assumed right off the bat, hey, are we changing? We may be or may not be, are we voting? No, we're not voting on it, I guess my take.
Unmasked.
Unmasked, yep, um, my take is we're at a point where either, I need to know if the board has, I'll tell you where we're at, I'm talking administratively and, and even where Lee is coming from and stuff here in a few minutes, but are we at a point where either we can set criteria, you know, of when we would move, or are we not at a point we can set criteria to move? Are we at a point we don't care about criteria and we're, you know, doing something or not doing something? We need to have a little bit of conversation. That being said, if there's stuff we need, we need to get next Monday, okay, or we need two weeks after that, I think, in March 14th or something, my point is we're starting to get, you know, questions and we need to at least have some conversation, so I guess my thought is I would start out, I'm just gonna, are you okay with me just laying some groundwork if I can find my notes that I wrote about?
If, if you don't mind, Kevin, I would just like to say that when we have this discussion, um, I would like us all to remember that we are professionals, we are, we were voted into this position and we should look at facts rather than feelings and so now I think we've got a number of facts and so I think, you know, this is great, we can look at all of our facts, so go ahead Kevin.
Okay, so first of all, just so everyone realizes or at least we remember where we're at, right now, students are still out, minimum, if a student tests positive, they're out 10 days, okay, that's where we're at, if a family member of a student tests positive that is not vaccinated, meaning the student's not vaccinated, they're out a minimum of 14 days, now if multiple family members test positive, then, you know, this can extend out or, um, I'm just gonna use myself and our family as an example, cause I can quickly do that, but, you know, um, if our daughter was not vaccinated and I tested positive, she would automatically have to be home, okay? Now if, just say, seven days down the road, Stacy tested positive, now Ava still has to now start over because she, you know, if, if she was unvaccinated, okay, she now has to go 14 days, am I correct with you? You know, from that, so it can extend, now that being said, if students are vaccinated, they are just like an employee then, where if, if I'm vaccinated and Stacy tests positive, as long as I don't have symptoms, I can come to work, okay, because I'm vaccinated, now if I have symptoms, obviously I'm out and so on, um, students the same way, students vaccinated, if they don't have symptoms, they can, they can come to school still, okay? So that does not change, that's where we're at. Some districts, we talked about this, was it a month ago now, I think, you know, some went to a shortened quarantine, um, meaning five days, after five days you come back wearing a well-fitting mask, you gotta wear it for the next five days. We didn't choose that route for students, we did for staff, um, the reason being is we felt we could, um, better control, again, not right or wrong, that's just where we're at. Um, when we started at the beginning of the year, if you recall, vaccinations were not, um, were, were new so to speak for students, um, I think 18-year-olds don't quote me, I don't remember at the beginning of the year if, um, the 12 to 17 group were going yet or were very close they're going, but that was a piece of the conversation is we wanted some time to possibly let, you know, a larger group get vaccinated. At this point, five and up have had the possibility for quite some time, okay, and so I, I think that at least deserves a conversation or possibly changes, um, some thoughts, you know, I will be honest, our vaccination rate in the county, okay, is I believe 57.3%. That was as of a week ago when I was collecting, it's maybe went up slightly and of course the data drags a little bit, um, the five to 11-year-old, it's low, it's 14%, okay, as of the last update, um, 34% for 12 to 15 and 34% for 16 and 17-year-olds, I think.
And in our county.
In our county, yeah, and, and I'm gonna assume our town is very similar, you know, unless, I'm just picking, unless North Home has a real high rate or Little Fork or, you know, but, um, I, I have to assume, you know, we're right in there. Um, as far as cases, and, and I know everyone has looked, I can bring the, our cases up, meaning school, we're in a good place right now, a much better place than we were a month ago, um, we're at four cases as of today, um, yeah, we just took a huge ride just like the county, the county, um, uh, just to be honest, they had 1,018 cases in the last, this is from Derek, the last three months, that's about 50% that they've had the whole pandemic, you know, this last wave was a huge wave, okay? That being said, this is data of as of, uh, February 15th, so we're roughly a week old, we were down to, um, 40, let me just find it, 44, 41 active cases in the county, okay? So again, you know, he's saying the same thing, they followed that bell curve, they're, you know, going in a very good direction very quickly, um, 55 total cases over the last two weeks, but they were at 41 active cases when he emailed me, like I said, I'm on, I think 15th or 16th. So that being said, I don't have a revelation, you know, that something drastically has changed, the CDC still recommends, you know, wearing masks in a setting where you can't, you know, social distance and can't, you know, stay away, um, and again, they have their same recommendations, but on the flip side, I'm here to have a conversation of where are we at and again, it's not right, wrong or indifferent, is there something, I'm gonna use what I told Rox is, each person has to figure out where they would be comfortable, you know, or when they would be comfortable making a switch. You want me to speak for us as a group? Or, okay, I mean, we are behind, I'm gonna be honest with you, we're ready to take a step forward and again, um, based on what I'm talking about, where we're going, not against, um, you know, putting some criteria in place and I have some examples, different schools have done different things, you know, looking since the beginning of the year, you know, if you're over 5% or over 3% or over, you know, a percent of positive cases in the building or combined is building in the town, what would you do? There's another, um, I came across, well, another interesting twist, um, and I think it was Brainerd, I have it in here, um, they're just doing straight attendance percentages, you know, they went back, cause we have data for, well, as many years as we've had a skyward, just say 15 years, we could tell you the percent on any day given time, you know, they looked pre-pandemic and then looked as they went through the pandemic, you know, whereas, hey, we know a lot of people are out, what percentage is that? Well, they set personal, you know, just combine, make it easy, that's how they did it, they set some thresholds, they are without masks right now, but they do have something in place where if they hit, you know, it was different, like the elementary, don't quote me on this, was like 13%, you know, if 13% were out, they consider themselves in a bad, bad place. High school was like 8% and junior high was somewhere in between, you know, it was just different levels, I'm just gonna say younger kids might be sick more, you know, I just, um, I guess and I didn't count, you know, sports and activities, um, kept that out, but that was another way to look at it, you know, but from our standpoint, um, and again, is all staff on board? No, we're never gonna have 100%, um, a while back, the teachers did a random, again, the teachers union, they were at 71.2% in favor, you know, just say 70, 30, you know, in favor of going, you know, without masks, again, it would be highly recommended, that's always gonna be the case until CDC or someone else, you know, comes out and says, you know, we're no longer highly recommending, you know, we would use that same thing, but I guess we're at the, at a point where we feel, at least with where our numbers are at, we're probably ready to make it an option, again, along with going to a five-day CDC recommendation where we have masks now, we have the.
N95.
N or K, N95, I think they're the same, but I mean, they're provided by the state, we have plenty for what we figure, um, is enough cases for the rest of the year, we also have some additional that we would have available, um, you can wear them up to a week if you take care of them and, you know, that we could provide, um, until they're gone or possibly even get more if we needed for people that, um, wanted those at least, um, as an option, so.
Kevin, could I add my?
Yeah, yeah, you sure can.
I shared with you guys, I really think that we have to look at numbers and please, I, I don't have, I'm very open to a discussion at this point, I wanna tell you what I found for information, I passed this out to our board members, um, just in the last few days, Essentia Health Pharmacy has gotten the antiviral pills, the pills are what you get if you test positive and you want to try to prevent it, similar to what people would call hamiflu for flu, um, I'm not talking about the IV medication if you're hospitalized and very sick, uh, Essentia has some and Duluth would get them more as needed, uh, Rainy Lake Medical Center Pharmacy has some in just the last couple days and would get more, I believe, as needed. The pills are not recommended for kids under age 18, um, the side effects, some would say are kind of severe, there's some fetal harm, uh, some other kinds of blood pressure, muscle ache, side effects, et cetera, to the two types of pills. Um, I'm just gonna go through what I know because I think we have to look at data and, um, so Cooch County residents who've had at least one COVID vaccine is at 57%. Um, the number of cases we had in Cooch County, um, we have had on February 4th, we had 25 cases, February 3rd, our seven-day average was 22 and so if you look at the graph that anybody can go online for, we have, uh, had a downward trend pretty quickly and, but again, like I said, February 3rd, our seven-day average was 22, um, so anyway, it short-lived on. So anyway, it short-lived on how this graph is going really fast down, and if you look at all the numbers I put together on the bottom of the handout, it just says, you know, as of February 1st, we had 45 cases in the county and then, you know, we have quite a few cases, but then the last, like February 11th, we started at 15 and then we ended up with zero on the 12th and zero on the 13th, so we are going in a nice direction. So, you know, I'm not opposed to, to considering the masks, making the masks optional, but I do think we have to look at all of these numbers when we do it. I don't know what the trend line is for the school, if it's very similar to what the county trend line is, I don't know, Leah, is that what?
I would say.
Okay. I can bring it up.
Can you bring it up?
Yeah, just let me, I have.
Because if it is, then that would mean possibly the beginning of February, we're still kinda high.
Whoops, sorry.
And now we're kinda low.
Give me one second.
And while you're doing.
No, it's here, it's here. So this is the elementary, sorry, and of course, the picture is right in the way. So this is the trend line for the elementary, and I'm gonna pull the high school.
What date is that peak number? Is that February 1st about?
Give me one second. No, it's gonna be February 1st, is this line right here?
Where are we at the peak?
Right here, so I'm guessing it was about the middle of January, January 21st.
Okay.
And, and the high school does a very similar, it doesn't, this blue line, which is the number of people out, does not go quite as high, but I mean, it's, it's identical, you know? This is from the start of this year, all the way to down here is today. And again, if you wanna see the high school, which I'm sure most of you have looked at, is the same, you know, very similar, and again, they're both in the same place, the elementary, it has one case right now and the high school has three. And again, that's total staff as well as students. Does it mean we'll have zero for the rest of the year? No, I mean, I don't think we're there. Rox, how?
Okay, I just would like to ask some of the other people. So I guess right now what I'm thinking is, like, the mental health piece, I mean, the education piece, the mental health piece. There's been so much issue with having to remind kids to put the masks up, put the wet masks up, that they're not getting to do their jobs, that they're wanting to do. So I think if we just start, I mean, if we remove them now, it doesn't mean that we can't go back and, you know, if members go crazy, we can always bring them back, right?
Well, yes, I think it would be harder, but yes. Yes, absolutely, we'd have to have criteria in place, right? What would constitute us to go back to masks?
So I, I have a question, what do you need, Antonio?
Yeah.
Okay, I just have a question. I was seeing a lot last week that the CDC was coming out with new guidelines, are they not, are we still waiting on that?
Supposedly they are, but, you know, whether, like I say, whether that includes us specifically or not, you know what I'm saying? You know, dislike this five-day reduced quarantine, at first it wasn't gonna pertain to schools, but then it did, but I.
This morning, the national news said that the CDC would probably send out a notice sometime, I think this week or within a week, that would say less masking, but it didn't say anything about school.
Yeah, I didn't see anything particularly about school either, I just thought that it was supposed to be some big announcement, so. So anyways, I bring that up because initially, when we had this conversation, I have a couple comments, a couple thought processes here, was that to follow the CDC guidelines and personally? I shouldn't say personally, as a board member, I still think that that's the appropriate thing to do. Now, we had a board session, this is more for a discussion of those board members, less for the public, I guess, we had a board session where we just talked about what we were talking about, where they said, the gentleman said that masks should follow the same process that we just did with pictures in classrooms and stuff. And my experience in the, through the whole process of how the decisions came down, the MSBA recommendations, the CDC recommendations, how the, how it ended up being the board's decision and stuff like that, I think it's separate, I think it supersedes how we want management to bring us everything. In this specific case, and this case alone, just because of how it played out, that doesn't mean I don't value your opinion, I definitely do, and I appreciate both yours and the nurses, I think they're very valid. So when I said as a board member, I think we should follow the CDC guidelines, that's the way that I'm leaning. I do, I have seen a lot of information, though, to say like, N95 masks are the way to go if you unmask kids, the kids, the other kids should be wearing N95 masks and stuff. So I think there's some, whichever way we end up going on this, there should be some additional precautions that we take for the kids who do have high risk, people at home, including providing masks at the front door if they come without a mask and want to wear a mask. I also, and this is more of the nature of kids, kids can be cold sometimes, and I would worry about the kid who's wearing a mask to protect his grandma or caretaker and how he's gonna be treated by the other kids. That's not a reason to not unmask, but I'm just saying it's something we should be aware of if that's the action that the board takes, is to not ostracize the kids that are trying to protect their family members or themselves or whatever.
And I made, and just to be honest with you, I made a similar comment that, you know, going to a shortened quarantine, and again, I go back to the little that I remember from high school is reading the Scarlet Letter, to me, it was like, if no one was wearing masks, and the only ones that had to wear masks were people that had had COVID, it was like, but the comment that someone made to me was, keep in mind, those people have been Zooming for five days, everyone in their class knows, you know, and I went, yeah, you got a good point there, or, you know, but technically, again, if we go to that, keep in mind, that's not just school, that's extracurriculars, you know, you practice, you participate, you're supposed to wear that mask, you know, where right now, you don't have to, you know, if you don't have, we need to follow it, and it would be, you know, not, but I'm gonna say, multiple opportunities. Now, that being said, if you don't wanna play, you can stay out the 10 days. When I say play, if you don't wanna come back under those guidelines of wearing the mask, wearing it correctly, and not having to be reminded, you know, many times, I mean, it will be, if we go to a shortened quarantine, you're gonna have to play by the game or you'll be home because there is a higher risk.
And we, yeah, I just think, I keep wanting to add, we gotta, we gotta make sure that if we do this, we need to, so, you know, under what circumstances we're gonna go back to masks.
You know, like, if it starts to go back up. I would, I would say that I did watch a report that said, since Omicron is less dangerous, I think that would be the right way to say it, I may be wrong, but, that if there was a case to be made for not masking, it would be after this wave hit, you know, and people have more immunity and things like that, on a less severe thing opposed to one of the first, I forget the Delta variant and stuff like that, so. But still, like I said, I still think we should follow the CDC guidelines, but that being said, they're gonna release some this week. I would love to have heard the CDC guidelines.
So what I just read in the paper from the 18th, the journal had, or the Gazette had the CDC guidelines, and it pretty much said that it was in any business's hands as far as, like, making those, they do recommend that you wear a mask, but.
Yeah, I mean, I have the guidelines right here for the, a business and a school are two different things.
But I couldn't find anything on the school.
I have, I mean, it's right here on the CDC guideline for school mask webpage, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it says that they still, I go to the top of it because I went down to the asterisks of it, it says that they still recommend it. CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, but that's the asterisk, because we know that there's reasons not to. Ages two years and older staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. So that's right there from, and it was updated on January 13th of 2022, and so what I was actually checking was, did they update it? Because I sort of kinda wait on to see what they end up doing there.
So I just have a quick question. So if we say, okay, five days quarantine, and then five days back with a mask, let's just say on day seven, they test negative, would you make them wear the mask the rest of the three days even though they're negative?
See, the problem, and Leah can correct me, is, you know, they've said you can't test, test negatively test out, you know, so that, yeah, you would, you would wear it the, you know, the, the second five days, no matter, you don't need to test, so to speak. It's kind of like, if you test positive and go somewhere else and test negative, MDH says a positive is a positive, you know, once you're positive, you're positive. And on the flip side, many people or some people can test positive for quite some time, we're not gonna, the same thing, test people, say on day 10, you're still positive, you can't, no, it's, it's wear that good mask.
So then, on the flip side, after day 10, they could still test positive on day 11, but now they don't have to wear a mask?
But, but they're saying it's a, for the most part, a residual, for the most part, you know, you could test, some have set up to 90 days, you know, still test positive, but you're not technically contagious. And again, I'm not gonna pretend to be the doctor or nurse, and you know.
Which was because of the viral world, that they think that it would be after day 10, even if you tested positive, you would not have a barber board big enough to probably spread. Leah, you know more, but.
But the home test, you would probably test negative, but you still might test positive on the PCR test. Right, right, I know, because, well, I do the testing too, so I, yeah, the PCR is more sensitive, so I get that piece of it, but if you're testing positive still on a home test, that means that you can still pick it up, so, you know what I mean? It's just, it's just weird to me, I guess, that's all I'm saying. And I'm saying if somebody tests negative on a home test or an antigen test, that why can't they come back to school without a mask? Or why can't a student who's in the same household that's testing negative every single day, tested by you every single day, is testing negative, can't come back to school?
Well, I think we have to draw some lines.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, it's, it's a safety precaution of, you know, like I said, if someone is positive and they're out, we'll allow you back in on day six. But here are the criteria for the first five days, and even the CDC says it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 80 or 85% of the people, you know, those first five days are the highly contagious.
Yeah.
Someone could be here on day six, seven, eight, that still has some, you know, and that's the purpose of wearing the good mask. And again, are we gonna, I'm gonna say inundate the testing places, you know, just to get a negative? I, I don't think it's a route we, we wanna go, you know, personally.
Jen? I think you bring up a good point, Joanne, that I have, you know, sitting at the hospital wondering, somebody's still very sick, but it's 10 days and they come off the COVID unit, and you're like, you're still coughing, you know, I mean, some of it, you know, there's just a range of who is still more contagious, who is not, what is the reliability of different tests, and how do we know, how we know? And I think they had to draw some lines because they want people to try to get back in the world, and so it is hard to draw the line because it does, anybody can go, well, that's not fair because this is happening for this person and not for that person, and at some point, they have to draw a line. And I think that's where a lot of these get really frustrating, a lot of the rules, and for people will say, this just doesn't make sense that you can do this and not that, and I think, I have felt that way a lot of the times over the pandemic, and like, how safe am I to go see this person, or how did my daughter get it twice in the 90 days when we were sure that that wasn't possible? You know, there's lots of variations, and of course, so, I'm with you, I think it's a good point, and I think it's gonna be brought up, and I think we have to draw a line at whatever, whatever recommendation it is, and I think if we draw the line, or if that's how we have to go, and then we just treat everybody fairly, and I think that's as best we can. And sometimes it won't be fair, it won't feel fair, so, but I think you bring up a good point, and I have a few questions, like, I remember in the beginning of the school.
Can I throw one thing before? The, the other piece is, you don't come back on day six if you're, you know, hacked and coughed and, you know, got all kind, you know, keep that in mind, though, that there are people that, yeah, that don't get to come back, and there's people that haven't come back on day 10, you know, still are, so I just wanted to clarify, sorry.
And in that, I really appreciate Leah and her staff who take the care to contact families and sometimes tell them unfortunate news that your kid needs to stay out a little bit longer because of these details. I know that's not easy, but it's really important in keeping our, our school safe, I appreciate it. The beginning of the year, I know Little Fork, who is an example that I will use because I read their COVID plan at the beginning of the year, and it had some specific criteria on if we're not gonna mask, this is when we're gonna mask, A, B, and C, I don't know if their plan has changed, but one instance is if a third grade class has, you know, there's a case that was positive, then the whole class will mask for a certain number of days, I don't know if that's something that will come up, like how we're dealing with cases that have been there, you know, or how we're watching for that. For instance, did we ever, I know it was really hard to track because we had so many cases in a short time in the last several weeks, whether it was spread in class or whether it was spread because they're on the hockey team together, they're on the bus together, they're on, you know, they're, they're friends that hang out every weekend, so I know that that was hard to probably tease out. Did we ever feel, if, if it came up, did you ever find out, like, you know what, this one just ran through the sixth grade class, they really don't have a lot of connections here, or, I'm not saying sixth grade, but whatever.
If I can just, and, and just so we don't go on and lose, I would say there were a couple cases that I'm gonna say we highly suspect, you know, it just, it just got going, you know, we were looking, and again, one of the cases I, or one of the plans I'm looking at, if you get four in an elementary room, that's what they use for criteria, then everyone's back to masking, you know, and again, I think two weeks.
In that room.
In that room, you know, and again, not saying that's right or wrong, that's just one place I was reading, came across, but I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna throw, there were at least two, maybe three that I can think of that we started going, hey, do we have to do something? You know, I mean, it just.
Because it looked like they were sort of spreading it amongst themselves.
And again, you know, you start looking at it and going, okay, these people were those people, you know, had something else, but there was enough that it got, can I just say dicey?
So are we, I guess, are we saying that maybe you should come up with some general criteria that we can look at as a suggestion, and then we can go from there?
Well, that's an example, I think it should be kind of, I, I am saying that I think we should have a thoughtful, we do know, there is enough evidence to suggest that masks can be helpful in spreading it, especially in close, in close contact, I mean, that's why the CDC is still recommending it. I'm totally open to a conversation about lifting it, especially with criteria on, at what point, I mean, maybe the next wave is not gonna be half as contagious as Omicron, that'd be great, maybe it'll be twice as viral or as lethal, I don't know, but we should always, obviously, we continue to make those judgment calls, but in the, in the short time, what we do know are certain things about how it's spread, and, you know, we know there's close contact, that we're not gonna spread kids out, and so having some guidelines, I think, makes sense that are based on the facts that we do know and that can be reasonable, reasonably safe, we don't wanna take masks off and then just the three kids that, whose parents want them to wear masks are wearing masks, and then we just let it go through the whole rest of the class, you know, without maybe thinking about that kind of input that we can have, so, you know what I mean? So I think, and having that laid out is just good practice for the rest of us to say, well, this is what we know going into it, or making this change. So I'd like to just suggest that when that is done, it is done with that type of detail in mind, that you're gonna, you know, write it out, that you're gonna wear it on the bus and the.
And again, bus is a non-negotiable right now.
Oh, sorry, yeah, but I mean, like, I'm just thinking in sports or whatever.
And I think we need to remind drivers of that.
And then my other question was this piece about, okay, there's a person coming back day five to 10 with the proper criteria, and then how do we, because there'll be kids that will be wearing masks, my, my daughter by choice wears her K95 every day, how are we, how are we thoughtfully, and I'm not saying you have an answer yet, but like, a thoughtful process on how do we follow those five to 10, how do we let teachers know, or, you know what I mean? So that it's respectful of those kids, and also being safe for the kids that are sharing space with those kids. Um, you know, again, I think that, just that thoughtfulness is what I'm asking for.
Obviously, elementary, very, very easy. You know what I'm saying, Missy left here, but I mean, I'm just picking on Missy. You know, she's gonna know, and we're gonna say, okay, so and so's coming back, you know, on, to say today, five days, you know, elementary's a lot easier. High school's a little more challenging, but we do have a way that we've come up with. It's a Google spreadsheet that is only open to teachers, you know, or I should say staff that we open it up to, that we can, kinda like, um, Leah does right now. We have a, you know, COVID tracker, so people know, again, it's private, it's confidential data that those that need to see it can see, you know, and so that is our plan to effectively chart out the five days, you know, and yeah, it's gonna take, but like I say, it's gonna be an education piece that, okay, Jen, you get to come back today, you know, day, I'm just gonna say seven, because for whatever reason you weren't ready on five and, or on six. Okay, through this day, you gotta wear it, gotta be over the nose, you know, other than eating lunch, and again, we'll have a little more distance, because that's a part of that process, you know, for eating. Um, can't get, we don't have a separate room, but we can spread those kids out a little more, and that's part of the agreement. If you're coming back, not gonna sit at your friend's table with, you know, eight or whatever, eight or 10, however many are, you know, and we'll work through it. And I think, I'm hopeful that we will get much more, I'm just saying hopeful, compliance when I haven't had to wear it a lot of the time, and now, yeah, I picked it up and, I have five days, five days, you know, and we're gonna need coaches, you know, so when we go that way on a shortened criteria, we're gonna need coaches, there's no iFans or Bucks, you know, other than shower, and I suppose they shower, you know, by themselves, you know, the rest of the time, it has to be on.
And they're to wear a KN95. And I, yeah, so I feel like that, and then getting that out ahead of time, I felt like when I read, when I read the Little Fork one, I knew what to expect. If my kid is in third grade and they have whatever, whatever, I know my kid's gonna go for 10 days with them, you know what I mean? So just laying it out there and being that clear, just like with all the PBIS stuff, we try to say, this is what we expected before there's a problem, so that, you know, you say, this is how we're going to do it, and I need you to comply, whether it's that conversation with those kids, or with the teachers, or whatever, because compliance at the high school has been limited in a lot of ways. I think everybody that I've spoken to have noticed that. Um, and so the, I just think it's a great time to have a conversation, and I trust you guys are making these really good decisions, and those are the things that I would like to put into place.
So what we're thinking is that you should bring us back something in writing, am I hearing everybody right? Bring us back something in writing, maybe at our work session?
I guess what I'm gonna ask is, do you want formal approval? And, and I'm just asking this, or do you want administration, the nurse, and so on? Because there, there's many different examples. It's how much you want, you know, say in where the criteria is to mask, not mask. Um, I'll be honest, I mean, we would be at a non-mask, you know, right now, at least my gut, you know, on every example I've looked at, you know, now some of the upper, you know, percentages of number of cases in a building, you know, there is some variance, you know, from 3% to 5% for the most part, somewhere in there. Um, I mean, again, I'm asking this in a, in a polite way, do you want that brought back for the standard?
You're all ready to roll that out with the protocol forward?
Say that again?
You're all ready to roll?
No, I'm not, I gotta, no, it would take, I mean, it's not a, hey, come tomorrow with your mask on, no, we need to get our ducks in a row. You know, we would move as prudently as we can, um, but what I'm asking is, do you want it laid out? And do you want, so, okay, then we're gonna.
Yes.
I would stand by what I said, though, like, I'd like to follow the CDC di, or recommendations, they're not guidelines. Um, so anyway, that's where I'm kinda sticking with it. Tomorrow, the CDC recommendations change. Now, I'm just one board member, so I'm just speaking for myself. Um, but that, that's where, like, I am, if they, if they change tomorrow or the next day and they loosen up for school settings, which apparently none of us know if they're going to or not, um, then I would, I would change my opinion, but that's where I'm standing.
And I guess the piece that I'm thinking about is a couple different things. One, I, I think that we put a lot of thoughtfulness in the decision when it first happened, and there was a lot of conversations on multiple different levels. And I think that having that matrix, getting that put together and brought to the board, not for us to necessarily pick apart and say this, that, this, that, this, that, but very much like the, I can't remember the gentleman's name, I'm just gonna call him the teamwork's guy forever. I still remember.
Right, right.
Um, but I think that piece of, you know, you presenting something like that to us, and then us making that endorsement of support, I think is really good. I agree, we also, this is almost one of those topics that is not like the pictures. I think that there's some layers to that that we shouldn't get into the weeds, but we still may have some feelings and discussion about it as a larger piece. The other piece that I would really like to see, and this kind of goes to what Jen is saying, is that it's the plan, but I would also like to see the, um, communication plan with how that information is gonna be rolled out, not just to students and teachers, but to our community. Because I think it is one of those things where if the, you know, like, how do we make sure that the parents are immediate, like if you were sending Jen? Because if it's that one piece of, oh, you get to come to school and your masks, maybe to take their masks off, I feel like there's gonna be some prep that we would want to do ahead of time, whatever that ends up looking like. So those would be the pieces that I guess I'm thinking about.
Right, I think that it, it's important to be able to have parents understand the guidelines too, in terms of coming back.
And the communication to get that up to the parents.
Right, yep. Jen, do you have more?
No, I don't think so.
Joanne?
No, I think that's good. Do you have what you need, Kevin?
I, I think I do. Um, my plan, and, and I guess I'm, I'm, I'm almost looking at, I mean, Monday's not very far off. We're gonna be ready, because, I'll be honest with you, I'm the only district that I can find that still has masks. Okay, and so, no, no, and, and I'm not saying majority is, I'm not talking, just, people wanna move, and so we wanna move, so we're gonna get this put together as quick as we can, and wanna bring it on Monday for your approval with a plan to, you know, roll it out as, as soon as we can. Um, and, and that's where we're at. And, and, you know, like I said, I've been on several state, like I said, we're the only, I'm not saying the only, but the only that I have found that still have or don't have a plan to transition. So we will work on, and again, it'll be with Jen, Missy, myself, Leah, um, Randy, and, you know, anyone else to get some criteria, okay, put together on what would, you know, constitute the different levels, if you will.
I think that they have colored too, that's kinda cool.
And this is just one example, this is Alexander, Brayne had some color, I printed, I mean, and there's many examples. Um, and, and so we will, we will have something for you, um, next Monday, if that means.
Sounds good.
Thank you. 5:15 for eight, Monday, 5:15?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Sounds good to me.
I just said I'm the problem child, apparently I can't get here on time.
I will be here next week.
Can you hear my name here?
Pardon?
I will be here next week.
Oh, you won't? Which is just fine. Okay, I trust all of you.
Okeydoke.
The next question goes along similar, and, and it has to do, because it's come up in our soup's, um, meetings, do we wanna continue Zoom? Is that something that is just a way, way of life now? Um, and again, there's mixed, I mean, to be honest, mixed, some people are, some groups are, some are not, some are just going back to what they did, and, and so I'm just kinda asking, um.
I do, I do have an opinion on this, um, but mostly it's a couple months old, um, because it was from when I was the board chair, and, uh, I would, I would say, uh, that we shouldn't Zoom anymore. However, I would also say that when we started Zooming, we were Zooming differently, and now, um, the audience can't just shout out whenever now, you know, so the way that we're doing it now is significantly better than when we started, and we could hear everybody sneezing in the background, or, you know, yelling at people to mute their mics and stuff. Um, and board members are here, for the most part, um, except that when they can't be for whatever reason.
And again, we have the option, just like normal, I'm just saying it, if Jen was somewhere and wanted to be, they can publicize and do that. Just asking, do we continue, you know, or is it?
So I guess, I guess my, what I was trying to say was, um, if you, if you asked me two months ago, um, I would have said, we need to stop Zooming, and people can come, and now I would say, I don't care, so.
And I feel like it would be, and I said, here's what I know, I'm on a couple other boards, they're all still Zooming. I'm, uh, I know that there are, that, that, there are some places that are not, like, I believe all or most of community services are not doing in-person interviews at this point. So there's still people that are being careful. Um, so if, it, so that's one piece of the info. The other piece is, if we stopped, would we hear a bunch of parents or teachers saying, you know, I really want it to be on Zoom? And so could we have an experiment of stopping for a month or two, and then if we heard something from people saying, well, maybe we could start it up again if we get enough people wanting?
I mean, anything's possible. Our attendance has dropped drastically, you know, I mean, obviously, when no one could be here, that was a different story, you know, when we were all out, but I mean, the less.
Give an example of numbers.
Well, how, how many people?
I don't know.
Right now, I think there's four that I'm seeing.
And we used to have what?
And, and, oh, I shouldn't say four. One's that computer, one's me, one's Stacy, one's Beth. Is there more, or am I missing?
There's 25 attendees.
Oh, there's a lot of people watching.
There's 25 people, and how many did we used to get? A hundred?
Well, you go back to some of those early September, really. And again, my gut.
There's a lot of more information, we're making decisions on.
No, my gut on why there's 25 tonight is the one conversation piece, you know, and I, I can't guarantee that.
What are we dropping to before that? Are we, were we out like four or five every time?
Last time there was a lady, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Beth has been on, I think Beth was the only one last time, um, you know, and again.
Depends on the topic.
And some might come and go, right? They come here for a short time and leave.
Depends who wants to listen.
Go ahead, you said.
Depends on what they wanna listen to.
I, I think this is also a management thing, although it is a board, you know, it's our meeting that we tend to have input in. I think that it makes sense, because we're still kinda floating around in this COVID season, to finish the school year out with Zoom meetings, is, is just, again, a comment to make, again, I'm only one board member, so I would support whatever the team decides. And then reevaluating that in the summer, saying, okay, we really have, looking at our numbers, or, um, and again, I can see at the beginning of the school year, what's gonna be different this year? People might tune in and wanna be tuning in from home. Is it convenience, perhaps? Is it necessary? You know, like, I think, I think as a team, you have to weigh, is this an inconvenience to have them view it live, or view it on later on KCC? You know, like, I'm, I'm open to whatever either way, I think it's good to say we're gonna stop at whatever point, and then make sure people know that well in advance.
Yeah, the only other thing that I would add is, we're not interacting, um, anymore because of the way how I set it set up, which is, from running a meeting's perspective, is a million times better. Um, so it, it's, it's more of, um, do we like how we're meeting with microphones, right? Do we like, do you like setting it up? Um, is it working when you set it up? I know the answer, but, I mean, I should say, is it worth it, your stress of setting it up? Because KCCTV puts it on almost, usually the next day. Um, and so they're seeing it almost in real time anyway, so is it worth the hassle of KCCTV?
Could we post the times that KCCTV puts it out on our sign?
Well, she mostly, you guys mostly do it by when you render it, and the process it takes, and how many other meetings she has.
She does, I know, she's.
So she tries to get it up as fast as she can.
No, I'm saying, yeah, that doesn't help anybody who's saying, I really wanna watch it. If we could say on, on our school sign, the school board meeting is.
Oh, is that already scheduled time? You, you might not know.
This is not live.
No, I mean, when, when they post it, like, you posted it, it airs more than once.
Yeah, I know, but again, people, when you got 24 hours in a day, airing more than once.
Yes, no, I'm not arguing here with your ox, I'm trying to ask him if he knows the time.
Like, do they usually post it like two days after, or?
It's whenever Darcy has time to.
So maybe, yeah, I'm guessing you don't know a ton of that information.
I, I click the record button.
Thank you for doing that.
I, I can try finding some of that out. My, my understanding is it runs, you know, for X amount of time now on a routine, and depends on how much they have for programming, just like the city. It is on YouTube.
Yeah.
It's on YouTube 24/7.
Yeah, except for, I've done that, and it doesn't, it, I have tried to watch something, and it isn't, you know, YouTube would have like the previous board meeting, but not the current one, and like a week or two later.
Yeah, it takes time to upload and to mess it up.
Right, so what I'm saying is, could we say at a minimum, as a replacement for Zoom, could we say that we guarantee that at least one time a week, it can be watched on KCCTV predictably, so people can scan, can really find it? I can never find it.
I would think that we have to ask Darcy.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's on, I mean, I've watched, I don't go back and watch a lot of our, you know, sessions, but I have went and watched them, and I've never had an issue.
Yeah, it's always the next day, you know.
Except on.
The next day, what time?
No, on YouTube. So, I mean, all these people are on the internet anyways. So if, if they can figure out Zoom, they can figure out YouTube.
So I just wonder if it's more of a piece of, of just giving, like, whatever that information is, whatever, let's get some of the information we can from Darcy, and maybe that's something we can put on our Facebook, just to provide that education piece.
I know at churches they schedule them at certain times, so.
Okay.
And other than that, just a reminder, next Monday, 5:15, same time, same place, then we take, must be a week off, and then we're back on the 14th, and, um, then our normal meeting on the 21st. Again, the next two for sure are gonna be, for the most part, structured on budget stuff and planning. Um, we'll have one item next week to pass by you, um, for, for overview or whatever. I'm not gonna put action on it, I'm just gonna be honest. I'm gonna put, you know, that, we'll come and present and get your feedback, and then get a plan for implementation down the road.
Okeydoke.
Is that something that we'll get ahead of time?
It's, I, I don't wanna say it's gonna be ready, you know, we'll get it out as soon as, and I'll get it to you as soon as I can, Jen, for input. Um, I don't wanna say, because again, it's not gonna be ready tomorrow. It's gonna take a few days, and, but we will have, we'll put a spot on there to share it as part of the working session, and we'll get it out to everyone as soon as we can for input, thoughts, and again, bring it to the board.
Okay. Um, now Beth, are you still there, Beth?
Yes, I am.
Okay, would you like to give us a report after all that discussion?
Um, we've got some classes coming up, dog obedience starts next week, that was a very popular class with, um, a waitlist. We have, um, defensive driving is gonna be in April, uh, on April 11th, and driver's training starts the end of March. Um, I have two people that will start, start up swim lessons, um, mid-March to the end of March, and then we have some college students coming back in mid-May, um, that will also do swim lessons. We, um, are just waiting for, um, boys swimming to get done, and for two people to get trained to, um, do the water safety instruction classes. Um, lots of parents have been calling about, um, getting kids into swim lessons, so I'm excited that we're able to get a schedule for after school and, and get some kiddos in for lessons. Um, I attended the strategic plan, um, meeting on Thursday last week. Um, I have to say that I came out of that meeting, um, very hopeful. very hopeful. I thought it was a very good meeting, it was time well spent, and, and it was, it was very good. I'm very, very hopeful for that process. Otherwise, I've been talking to people about getting, now that we're hopefully, hopefully, I guess is the word that I'm gonna use tonight, COVID is winding down. I'm hoping that we will start to be able to expand our classes, so I have been talking to people about what our fall is gonna look like in getting some classes back up and running. And I'm really positive that we'll have some, some more selection come the fall. And I've been talking to Miss Tate about what summer is gonna look like with some programming, so hopefully we'll have some more information coming out about that shortly. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Committee reports, committee ad, if I can, no, yes, committee ad, anybody?
In, in on here, and I don't know if anyone wants to attach, the community minutes are attached here. If, like I said, Tony and.
Whatever.
Who's, who's?
Joan.
Joan, yeah, if you have any comments, that's up to you. Otherwise, the minutes are.
Is there anything else to add, you want to add to what the?
I think if we can just add that we are looking for some active community members to be sitting on that board, that would be amazing.
Okay, rec commission. Anybody?
We just, oh, sorry. We discussed the policy for masking there. Antonio, if you want to add, we looked at the CDC recommendations, we looked at what they were doing now, we kinda came up with a plan as far as that goes, for what we would allow, and also that it would be based on, like, if our school required masks, that the students playing there would follow whatever guidelines, that the rule that they're participating in at the school would, would just follow that.
Okey doke. Any other questions, discussion? All right, motion to adjourn. Emily, second?
Second.
Yeah, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks to all, see you next week.